Commissioner Gordon, just checking one more time, you can hear us?
Yes, I can.
All right, we'll get started. Welcome to this Board of County Commissioners meeting for Utah County, March 29th, 2023. Commissioner Gordon will be joining us online. We typically start both of these meetings with a prayer, thought, or reading and a pledge. Today, the prayer will be offered by Rabbi Zappel. If you want to come and send, you start with a prayer and then we'll head to a pledge. Thank you so much.
My name is Rabbi Benny Zappel, and I have had the privilege of being the executive director of Chabad Lubavitch of Utah in Salt Lake for the last 31 years, and it's an honor and privilege to be here with you today.
Thank you.
Almighty God, King of the universe, you have created this world, and you have entrusted Noah upon exiting the ark after the universal flood, the seven universal laws of Noah, by which you have reminded us that we are to act with one another in a godly fashion and in a godly life, emulating what our founding fathers say in the Pledge of Allegiance, that we are one nation under God. Almighty God, in honor of the world celebrating the 121st birthday of the Lubavitch Rebi, Rabbi Menachem M. Sneerson, of righteous memory, this coming Sunday, April the 2nd, please, we beseech you, bring about universal peace in this world, so that one another can respect and honor our fellow individuals, because we're all the children of one and only God, and it is only you that can entrust each and every one of us and inspire us to live our lives in a godly fashion. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much. Do we have a volunteer to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Yeah, thank you. Come forward and just state your name for the record.
My name is Greg Durdin. I'm from Orem. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. We will, we will start with the public hearing that is scheduled. We'll need a motion to open that public hearing.
I'll make the motion.
Second?
Right, it's been moved in second, and all in favor say aye. Aye. That public hearing is open by a vote of three to zero. Do we have any public comment to consider the change in existing salaries of the Utah County officers of Utah County? Yeah. Once again, just state your name for the record. Thank you.
My name's Greg Durdin. I'm from Orem. It's mostly a question. The effective date of this increase in salary will become effective when?
I think we've asked that it be implemented when our officers are getting theirs implemented. So our police officers, will it be two weeks? Yeah, two weeks. So it would be in two weeks when, when the pay increases, when we vote on the pay increases for our officers.
Just to note, legislative pay increases are only effective after the next election, so that there's less conflict of interest in their voting. So that would be my comment.
Thank you for your comment. Do we have any other comments? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I will motion.
Second?
All right, it's been moved in second, and all in favor say aye. Aye. That passes three to zero. Thank you. Okay, now what we will go through and pull items off of our agenda to hold or discuss or table or continue, all other items will be put onto the consent agenda and passed unanimously. So items one through 10.
I'd like to hold three, and of course, five and six.
And those are the only ones I had? Do you have any additional? Well, actually, on item number five, I was just saying, on item number five, do we need to hold it, or can we just put Anthony Canto in that?
Zachary's Attorney's Office. You're, you're free to just put the name in and then put it through on consent.
I'll be good with that.
Okay, let's just add Anthony Canto and leave five on consent then.
Withdraw that.
Yeah, so that's good, but three and six I had as well.
Three and six, yeah.
Any additional, Commissioner Gordon?
No.
Okay, items 11 through 20?
I have none.
Okay, on item 19, I just want to note that I'm okay with the recommendation to recommend all. Okay, and then 21 through 24. I note that we need to continue item number 22 for two weeks.
Continue number 22.
Yeah. And then I wanted to hold number 23 for quick discussion. Okay, and then I think we only need to close session number 26, is that correct?
It's my understanding we need session number 25 as well, Commissioner.
Okay. 25 and 26?
26.
So strike 27 and 28? So we can strike 27 and 28?
Yes, Commissioner.
All right, Alice, you want to repeat that back?
Okay, I have us holding agenda items number three. We're approving on consent five with the name of Anthony Canto, holding six, continuing 22 for two weeks, which is April 12th, holding 23, and as far as the closed meetings, we're going to hold the stated 25 and 26, and striking 27 and 28.
All right, that's what I had as well. Okay, we will start with item number three.
I'd like, wanted to hold this one because I, I have some thoughts, as I've been expressing with HR, that perhaps there's another way to approach this. I'd like to see, instead of elected officials being specifically having their pay raise made, that it would be their departments considered first, and then whichever, whoever, whether elected or appointed department head, would also see a pay raise at that conjunction. That's what I was considering. And secondly, I'd like to see if, whether we should wait till the mid-year review to see where we are financially, to ensure that we have the dollars to do this. For the, if we just did elected officials, we easily have the funds for it for the rest of this year. But again, I'm looking at, in the approach, should we have the employees of each department be part of that pay raise? So if we have, for example, the sheriffs or the health department go first, then that would be the elected official or the appointed official's pay raise would go up at the same time as the employees. And that was my approach in this thinking. We've been talking about it for about a month or six weeks, I think.
Yeah, and I think that we did put in our budget this year to reevaluate every employee in the county, which is why this is being considered. It's only being considered because we are reevaluating every employee in the county.
Hi, Ralph Barnes, HR, if I may?
Yeah, absolutely.
So, you know, now that I understand what you're proposing, I did, I did understand it to be the case that we would make this effective the same time we implemented Phase One of the comp, you know, study, which affects our employees, which I think is, is a wise move. The thing that is unusual about elected official pay, and Paul or Zach, tell me if I'm wrong, is that this is an annually set, even though it's occurring farther in the year, it's an annual amount. So we can't really phase elected officials' pay. It's by, you know, statute, we can't vary their pay within a year by even a dollar. So I don't know if that makes sense, but I, I think we're pretty limited in how we can apply elected officials' pay, and they would have to happen all at once, essentially, and occur.
We're required by statute to have all elected officials at the same time.
Yeah.
It's more, but, yes, but it's more about, within that year of pay, they can't earn any more or less than we've approved. And so, does that make sense?
Yeah, and that's what I understood as well, is that we, we, we can't stagger it, it's all, it's all, we can't stagger it, and it's in the budget.
Proration is not an option.
Because we're reevaluating the entire county's pay.
That's correct.
And I think the difference between the elected official pay and the county pay is with the employees, we're actually bringing them up to market level. We're only bringing the elected officials halfway between the gap and market level. So we're actually raising the pay for the elected officials significantly less than we're raising the pay for all of the employees.
Yeah, and just if it's, if it's okay, I'd like to add to that. So if you look at the market, which is the other, you know, counties, both larger and smaller than Utah County, our elected officials are currently, you know, 20% below market. And we all know what happened in 2022. Wages in Utah County went up 15%, just in Utah County alone. So, you know, the proposal, which is, is based upon, you know, the county ordinance, would be raising the elected officials 9%. And so with this increase, we're still, you know, 10% under market. So it's a very conservative approach to increasing elected official pay. And again, I would agree, you know, ideally, we would want to, you know, do this in, you know, conjunction with our, with our employees, which is what we're intending to do. But again, it's, it's different because we can't, you know, prorate the elected officials, so.
They have to be all be done at once. Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Okay. And the median income in Utah County is just over $86,000. Is that what I see on this piece of paper? How recent is that study?
So here's another, I'll just say it, it's, it's a problem with our ordinance, actually. This is the median Utah County household income is $86,597 in 2021.
So that's even two years out.
The problem with the, with the index we use is it's two years behind. So we don't even have a current number that we're using. Now, are there other, other sources of, of, you know, that we could use that are current? Yes, so we do need to, you know, work on our ordinance, but that's just another argument that we're falling behind, and we're even still behind, because we're using old data that's even before the massive increase in salaries.
And I can anticipate the salary growth will continue in the coming years, in a short number of years. So it's, so we will always be behind, which is fine, because we're elected, we didn't come here for the pay, we came here to serve, which is, makes sense, we all agree to that. Just looking at the amount, and it just, what I'm concerned about is the, it's the timing, of course, and the economics and the community of the nation are not the best. And I'm concerned about, I need to ask you, I'll just pause myself real quick. Where in statute does it say that all of us have to be, see the pay increase same time?
Zach, do you have it at your fingertips?
Should we put up a commercial for a station identification?
I don't have it at my fingertips. Paul might, I can look it up.
Yeah, I think, I think actually, you know, the interpretation is, and it's not something we want to interpret, we want to do what it says literally, but I don't have it in front of me. My understanding is, once we set the wages of elected officials, that has to be for that year. In other words, we can't change it again.
Right.
If that makes sense.
That makes sense, so it won't change to 2023.
Correct.
As soon as it'll be the 24, if we were to do that.
So I guess you could make the argument that you wouldn't necessarily have to do them all at the same time. I'm not sure how.
Would affect the budget the same.
Yeah, I'm not sure how as time moves forward and comparables change, it kind of becomes a, you know, moving target, and we're already falling so far behind, I wouldn't, wouldn't recommend that, but I see what you're saying. It's more about where we look at as far as how we, you know, pay the elected officials, it's for the year. It's, we set that rate, again, they can't earn $1 more or one, essentially $1 less.
Correct, right.
It is, it is, it's not impossible, but I see it as problematic, as trying to do that in phases like we do our employees. So again, I'm not saying it's impossible, I just think it would be problematic, so.
Yeah, we've only talked about this briefly, so.
Yeah.
We tried to follow up earlier, but we kept going different directions and never did talk any deeper than that. Okay, okay.
Commissioner Gordon, do you have any, any thoughts?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. So for me, it was interesting, when I first got on the city council 12 years ago, you know, as this topic would come up, it was, you know, it's a difficult one, you know, as Commissioner Sakovic stated, you don't want to overpay elected officials, but you also don't want to underpay elected officials. We want to operate Utah County as a professional organization, and you want, you want to make sure that your, your people are being paid properly. I'm always the last one to get a raise in my personal business, it seems like. My wife gets a raise far before I do. And it's just a weird situation, because you're the elected official. And so I think it's important to understand that it's not just the commissioners in this situation, it's, it's the sheriff, the recorder, the treasurer, all of the elected officials, without naming them all. And so I appreciate all of the efforts that HR, Ralph and his team have put into this research, and, and I'm, and I'm inclined to move forward with it.
Okay, do you want to make a motion then?
Yeah, what I'd make a motion that we approve is item three, I didn't have it in front of me. Item three.
My preference would be to continue this until the mid-year review, to see where we are financially as a county.
All right, I will suspend the rules, and I'll second that motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye, nay.
Okay, that passes two to zero. I mean, two one, sorry, thank you, two one.
And that one was zero sometimes, but not all the time.
Well, I got used to the Wasatch Behavioral Health meeting this morning, and I was saying everything to zero.
Someone told me that in the Marine Corps, and once I'd made, once I became an officer, I was a zero, I didn't mean anything, so I have to remember that.
All right, we'll move to item number six. This one is a resolution proclaiming Sunday, April 2nd, 2023, as Education and Sharing Day in Utah County, Utah. So I will read this resolution, and then we can have discussion. Whereas the basis for the continuity of any society's education, and the great Utah County, the education of our youth is a priority, and whereas, in order to achieve its highest goals, education must not only impart knowledge, but also teach the students how to live, forming and strengthening their moral character, to make better life for themselves as individuals and for society as a whole, imparting moral and ethical values that have been the bedrock of society since the dawn of civilization, and whereas, a global spiritual leader and leading advocate for the advancement of education, the Rebi Rabbi, I'm gonna, okay, I was like, I'm going to butcher this name, Menachem M. Sneerson, thank you, of righteous memory, stressed that a moral and ethical education empowers every individual to develop their full potential in making the world a better place, and whereas, such an education can nurture the unity of diverse peoples through encouraging increased acts of goodness and kindness, imbued with awareness that even a single positive act of an individual can change the world and usher in an era of global peace, when there will be peace within our walls, serenity within our mansions. And whereas, Education and Sharing Day is observed each year on Rebi's birthday, in recognition of his outstanding and lasting contributions toward the improvement of education, morality, and acts of charity around the world, a day to pause and reflect on our responsibility to ensure our youth have the foundation necessary to lead lives rich in purpose and fulfillment through service and good works. And whereas, April 2nd, 2023, will mark 121 years since Rebi's birth, capping a year in which thousands of new institutions and initiatives were launched throughout the world in tribute to this celebration, and whereas, this year has an added significance as a year of Ha'zel, a Bible, a biblical event of unity, education, and spiritual growth, emphasizing how every person is crucial to perfecting the world. And whereas, this past year has brought the vision of Rebi for Utah County to fruition through the opening of the county's first home for Jewish life, based in Lehigh, with the opening of Chabad of Utah County on the part of Rabbi Chaim and Etzi Zappel. And now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Utah County do hereby enthusiastically welcome the opening of Chabad of Utah County in Lehigh, and also welcome Rabbi Chaim Zappel and Etzi Zappel to Utah County. The Board of County Commissioners also proclaims Sunday, April 2nd, 2023, to be Education and Sharing Day in Utah County, Utah, and call upon everyone to work together to create better, brighter, and more promising future for all. Proclaimed and approved this day, the 20, what's today's day, the 23rd? 29th. 29th of March, 2023. So this, this proclamation was brought to us by Rabbi Zappel, and if you want to come and maybe say a few words to us, and we would enthusiastically and emphatically welcome you and your center to our county. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Powers-Gordon. This resolution is a tribute to a great man with an important message for us all. Rabbi Menachem Mendel-Sneerson, known as the Lubavitch Rebi, became the leader of the Chabad Lubavitch movement in 1950. While he concentrated his efforts on rebuilding and energizing the global Jewish community after the devastation of the Holocaust, he paid great attention to the needs of all humanity. Many other leaders worked diligently to grow a following around themselves. However, the Rebi trained his students to move away from his court, to go out to every corner of the globe, to set up outposts of education and teaching light and love. Today, Chabad Lubavitch has representatives on every continent of the globe, in over 100 countries and in every one of the 50 states. The first Chabad institution was established in Salt Lake City in 1992, when Rabbi Sneerson sent my parents, Rabbi Benny, who I'm privileged to have with me here today, and his wife Sharon Zappel, as his representatives to the state to open Chabad of Utah. Chabad of Utah has since then blossomed to four different locations and five couples serving as emissaries in every corner of this great state of Utah. The Rebi's global impact was so great that he is the only rabbi to have been awarded the Congressional Gold Medal in recognition of his outstanding and enduring contributions toward world education, morality, and acts of charity, and the only rabbi to have a National Day of Reflection proclaimed annually in his honor. The Rebi taught that every individual, and in fact, every individual action, has an impact on the entire world. The Rebi emphasized the importance of education and good character, and instilled the hope for a brighter future into the lives of countless people in America and across the globe. The Rebi taught that education in general should not be limited to the acquisition of knowledge and preparation for a career. Instead, the educational system must pay more attention, indeed the main attention, to the building of character with emphasis on moral and ethical values. Over the last four decades, the U.S. Congress has set aside Education and Sharing Day in tribute to his commitment to teaching the next generation of Americans the values that make our country strong. It is a bipartisan day proclaimed annually by presiding U.S. presidents to coincide with the Rebi's birthday, which is four days before the Jewish Festival of Passover. This year, it is observed on Sunday, April 2nd. Education and Sharing Day is a time to pause and reflect on our personal responsibility to provide for our young people, to provide our young people with a moral education, to teach them the foundations they need to live a life of service and higher purpose. Education and Sharing Day is about creating conversations. It's about the conversations we have with our children around the dinner table, the conversations we have with our students in the classrooms, and the conversations we have day in and day out with our colleagues and friends that have an impact on paths and morals of life. The Rebi taught that in truth, every person is an educator, and we must be mindful of our ability to impact the lives of others. Today, we are proclaiming the Rebi's birthday, April 2nd, as Education and Sharing Day in Utah County, calling upon all who call Utah County home to reflect on our collective obligation and opportunity to enhance the true education of our children, to serve as a, as proper role models, and to take concrete action to bring more goodness and kindness into our world. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and we are very excited that you have chosen to open a center here in our county. Thank you. With that, I will entertain a motion to adopt the resolution.
I will so move.
Second.
All right, it's been moved in second, and all in favor say aye. Aye. That passes three to zero. Thank you. Absolutely, and thank you for bringing it to us. Looks like the next we have is item number 23. I'll have a few, this is the resolution for people being able to take time for the flood. I don't know if you want to, as you come up, I'll introduce it. So this is a, a resolution authorizing administrative flood leave for Utah County employees, and we brought this forward after the governor signed an executive order saying that state employees this year could use up to eight hours of paid leave to help with flood mitigation in their communities, and we are like doing similar, where people can take time to help. And Ralph, I don't know if you want to talk a little bit about how that works?
Sure, absolutely. So what you have authorized is the, is the ability of essentially a department head to approve an employee to take up to eight hours of leave time. And we would call this administrative flood leave, it's under our, it's, it's already available in our policy under, under administrative leave, but we're going to call this administrative flood, flood leave. And of course, the employee can't be in a situation where they would, you know, cause harm to their department, or increase, you know, cost to the county or anything like that, but knowing that we have a large, you know, staff of employees, and a lot of them are available and willing to help, and, you know, department heads are more than willing to let them help as much as possible, they could utilize this leave, you know, to do so. So I think it's an excellent idea, I'm glad we're doing it. It expires in August, at the end of August, so I'm hoping we are not still flooding at the end of August, but it could possibly happen.
It has snowed in July.
But we are, this is something that's actually available immediately, starting now. So I'll talk about a little bit more next week in department head meetings, so there's a clear understanding of how to go about this. But employee could ask their department head, you know, department head could ask their employees out of the way, just to make sure we get enough, you know, folks out here to volunteer, so.
Thanks, Ralph. So I think we, we find ourselves in a unique situation. The governor asked all of the people of the state to pray for snow, and we did, and the Lord delivered a lot of snow, and we have surpassed the all-time record high from 1983. And those of us that, I, some of my first memories were swimming in the yard when I was two years old in 1984. So that the, the snow, I think, has been a huge blessing for us, but we know that it must come down sometime, and when it does, we worry that there will be flooding, and we want to make sure that our employees have an opportunity to help their, their communities. I think the thing that sets Utah County apart from the rest of the world is that when we have a natural disaster, or any disaster, people step forward. You know, the Red Cross sets up shelters, and they sit empty because people bring their neighbors home and let them stay in their homes. And staying with that tradition, we wanted to make sure that our employees have the opportunity to go and roll up their sleeves and help their communities with flood mitigation, so that will go through department heads, and obviously, we can't have an entire department not show up one day, so there may be some juggling of who can help when, but we wanted to make sure that that was an option and that our, our employees were able to help their communities as well.
What is remarkable about this is if, I think we have about 1,350 employees, if that's the case, then we got roughly 450 hours, or days, excuse me, 450 days that we could devote to flood mitigation if we were, all of us chipping in with those eight hours. So thank you for bringing that up.
Yeah, I think my heavy equipment operating skills might get used this spring, so I'm, I'm starting to pull out my simulator and make sure my excavator skills are good. I can use a thumb on an excavator, Richard, in case you're wondering. I do know how to use the thumb on the excavator, we should be good. So everything but the bulldozer, I told you. I can do the wheel loaders, I can do the motor graders, I, just don't put me on a bulldozer, and we'll be just fine.
And you golf with it? With that thumb drive?
I, well, I can, I can stack tires on end.
Can you, can you hit the ball, though?
I'm, I don't know, it's been a few years, but I, we could try.
Drive a competition on that one sometime.
Yeah, I've got some pictures of competitions back in the day at Caterpillar. You and I, we should have a competition, you, me, and Brandon.
I would have to stick with John Deere Farm Equipment, not Caterpillar, sorry. And maybe a tank, well, I haven't driven the tank, I've got.
You and, you and Brandon can drive the combines, I'll drive the excavators.
Just need a piece of straw that you own.
Absolutely. Well, we look forward to the community coming together as we hopefully direct the water into the places it needs to be, i.e. the aquifers and the lakes that are a little bit low. But with that, I will entertain a motion. But with that, I will entertain a motion. Item number 23. Yeah, Brandon, did you want to, did you want to chime in on that?
Nope, well said.
Okay, so I'll go ahead and read it then?
Yeah.
Is that what, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, resolution approving adopting administrative flood leave. Whereas the Board of Utah County Commissioners of Utah County, Utah pursuant to Utah Code 1733-1 has the authority to approve and adopt human resource management policies. And whereas Utah has experienced high levels of precipitation this winter season, leading to significant above-average snowpack levels. Whereas precipitation is creating risk of flooding throughout Utah County. And whereas you, these risks may persist throughout the coming months as snow melts and as Utah County receives additional precipitation. Whereas in the face of these conditions, flood mitigation and relief is a crucial effort that depends on the support of Utah County. Whereas Utah County would greatly benefit from volunteers to assist in flood mitigation and relief. Whereas Utah County public employees are unified in their devotion to their community. And whereas the members of the Board of County Commissioners of Utah County, Utah desire to lay out guidance regarding administrative flood leave for the employees of Utah County Government, determined to be in the best interests of Utah County pursuant to County Human Resource Policy 5-500 leave. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Utah County hereby resolves that as follows. Each department shall grant all employees up to eight hours of administrative leave as defined in Utah County Human Resource Policy 5,000, excuse me, 5-500 leave, and hereafter referred to as flood response leave, to take time away from their normal county employment responsibilities to volunteer to assist with flood relief activities in Utah County, including flood prevention, mitigation, or any other response to flooding or potential flooding, shall set up appropriate limitations and ensure that the agency's critical work is not unduly interrupted, shall postpone or deny the use of flood response leave if an employee's use of this leave will significantly harm the department, including the department incurring incremental costs, or if the employee's normal employment responsibilities already include flood relief activities. Each employee wanting to use flood response leave shall request and receive individual permission from their department head to use flood response leave, and acknowledge that serving in response to flooding is voluntary, and that performing any work and travel to and from where they provide flood-related services is completely separate and segregated from their employment with the county. Each employee may break up the flood response leave in hourly segments as long as the, the leave used for this purpose does not exceed eight hours. Both full-time and part-time benefit employees are eligible for participation. Part-time employees may receive a prorated amount of administrative leave time. The Office of Human Resource shall issue guidance to ensure the implementation of this resolution. This resolution is effective immediately and shall expire on August 31, 2023. Approved and adopted this March 2029 day of 2023, Board of County Commissioners, Utah County, Utah. I'll make a motion to adopt.
Second.
Alright, it's been moved in second. All in favor, say aye. Aye, that passes three zero. I will note that we should ask everybody now to pray that it warms up slowly. So prayers that it warms slowly would be much appreciated. Alright, do we have any general public comment? Alright, seeing none, this will conclude the public session of our meeting. We'll head into closed sessions. Thank you.